Uh, what is that sound? I, yeah, cover it. It's okay. Looks like we're down to public concerns. Again, we set aside 30 minutes for public concerns, five minutes apiece. Plymouth residents, you know taxpayers have first preference and all others if we still have 30 minutes left. With that said, Mr. Humbert, thanks again.
Thank you, Jerry. Matt and Tammy Manning were kind of up to agree to come up from Franklin Ford, 60 miles down the road, heavily impacted area of gas drilling and fracking. In fact, their well, their water well was contaminated probably two years ago, I guess it was, very badly. So much so that their granddaughter was suffering serious problems. And I think that Tammy and Matt will confidently tell you about that. Her bedroom is situated just above the kitchen. It seems as though they were advised to keep their water running all the time. But the methane was constantly coming out of their faucet and then filtering up through the ceiling. So they were being, she was getting in effect gassed by that. That's Madison. Maybe you saw some of these hearings been held recently. Something when Barbara Lipton announced that she'd been told by Mandela from Bradford County that they've counted 400 water buffaloes in Bradford County alone. That is a strong indication that there are a lot of people there whose water has been badly affected because nobody would voluntarily want to put a water buffalo in your front yard. I didn't mention it yet, but maybe you've heard Matt and Tammy hosted Yoko, oh no, Sean Lennon, Susan Sarandon, Josh Fox, and Arun Gandhi at their house recently. They were doing a tour through Susquehanna County of the badly affected areas of Susquehanna County. In case you'd like a, one of the posters, here they are, picture of them with Yoko and Sean. And maybe you could even get Matt and Tammy to autograph one for you if you wanted. Recent, these recent D E C regs had, as it turns out, are more permissive than the 1997 regs that were issued, that were proposed regs that they just basically let die without developing or finalizing them. So it looks as though the D E C is really bending over backwards for the convenience of the industry. And the Slatchys have followed up on that and they've sort of noticed the D E C that they want to see the scientific study, that they're basically those new regulations on. So that's in the works. Maybe you heard about Carol Frinch, Bradford County farmer, dairy farmer. In the last nine days, three of her cows have aborted. So that's a very serious blow to any farmer to have their cows. In fact, two of them were eight months pregnant. So they were just barely getting by before the gas moved in, the gas activities moved in. And now that they're surrounded by these, the gas drilling and fracking and their well is another one that's contaminated, they're having serious problems. In fact, Carol has problems with rashes on her forearms because that, you know, she's washing the cows down. They don't have the money, they don't have any other source of water. The D E P won't reimburse them. The company that's operating in the area won't reimburse them. So they're in big financial trouble as well as being, their health being threatened. So you've probably read that the, let's see, W P X is building, no, I guess it's Williams is building a compressor station down there in that area, just a mile away from Rebecca Roder. And that compressor station they project will put out 98,000 tons of greenhouse gases per year. That's a very serious contribution to global warming. You know, when you think that's just one compressor station in a county where the industry wants to put in 27. In a state that's being heavily fracked in quite a number of counties, so you multiply that.
Is that methane or carbon dioxide?
Oh, that's all the different types of greenhouse gases. I don't think they broke them down by type, except that they're, they did break down nitrogen oxides. And I have some of the breakdown here somewhere. I might be able to find it. So, okay, I just have run out of things to say. So I hope that you'll have time and you'll recognize Matt and Tammy because they have a lot of important information. Thank you.
Are you from Plymouth, sir?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not from Plymouth.
Okay, any questions there, Eric?
Yep. I really haven't got much to say other than I, Anthony Moserillo. I feel the state and hopefully, because no one was seeing the regulations they put out, it would be favorable for Ben Lamore. He's Dr. Lamore of Pennsylvania. I believe the state of Iowa is going to be twice as tough on him. And he's supposed to be probably some of the toughest in the United States. But I'm just prepared to be against. I think it'll help the community, the town, and the state. Thank you.
So, Donald, Plymouth? A few things I'd like to say. First, my name is Brian Lotred. I want to thank the board for giving you 30 minutes to the folks and letting them express their feelings and their opinions on the natural gas development in our area. Also, I want to thank the board. Tonight I speak on behalf of the Central New York Landowners Coalition. And I'd like to also commend the board for understanding that it's very difficult to make a move right now as far as a moratorium or zoning because New York State has not released its regulations yet. So it's tough to kind of second guess, especially with a lot of the controversy that's surrounding the moratoriums and some of the zoning changes that's taking place right now. Dryden and Middlefield, as you know, has been combined into one case. That case, hopefully, soon will come to the end. And that also determines a lot about your zoning in the moratorium. If it gets overturned, then that means that home rule will be challenged. Therefore, all your zoning in moratoriums will be challenged. Okay, so it's a very difficult position for any town and any village to be in at this time. So again, I commend you on those steps that you've taken to listen, but be very cautious about moving forward. Oxford has just put in a ban against surface development, but pretty much left a pretty large gap in the subsurface development. So that's, and again, that's untouchedy grounds there, so we're paying attention to that one closely.
I thought somebody was filing on them.
A suit?
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, we did, but that was on the moratorium. And what they did is, and good point, they had a moratorium. The moratorium would challenge their 1970 report that they put together, a comprehensive plan, which is seven volumes. Okay, they'd have to rewrite that. And again, it costs a lot of money for you to do a comprehensive plan of that nature. Columbus, different places only have five-page comprehensive plans, actually had volumes. So that challenge, and it's part of a master plan that also is part of the town. So what they did is they decided to clarify zoning that they had there. And so, I mean, because it's not mentioned in their rules and regulations, therefore, they figured zoning out not the gas development, so they had to clarify that. Okay, that was, that's part of what took place there. Okay, and the county, as you know, under 239, we denied them. And rightly so, there's quite a few problems, loopholes, as we would call them, or problems within that finding. Okay, so again, that's, it's a lot of controversy right now. It's dividing communities and it's not necessary. Okay, because as we hear tonight, there's problems in P A. That's P A, different set of rules, different set of regulations. Okay, we don't even know it until we start yet. So many of the things that we hear, we always got to take the time to do the research. I know one that we'll hear tonight, we'll hear that about methane and gas. You know, this is Shemango County. Does anybody know anybody that has methane and gas? Methane, excuse me, has water? Just got a few people. Okay, it's happened when you sit on top of one of those lots, just natural gas formations. Salt Springs is in Franklin Forest, a mile away from where the residents have an issue. They have natural gas in the water there. Okay, but that's not what I'm here to talk about. Again, I'm here to commend the board. Thank you very much for your time and your patience and listening to the people and working through this. Thank you.
What's your question?
This is Bob. Bob, that's the way it was four years ago. I'm sorry for your day.
Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name's Will Braden, I'm from Oxford. And this is my second attendance meeting. I was here last month and I have a really nice facility here. The reason I came last meeting was because there was an editorial and basically an advertisement or an article in the Evening Sun that suggested that there was going to be speakers from Pennsylvania here, Ray Kimball and Craig Stevens. And the impression that I had gotten was that they were going to be on the agenda. Because I think that was, actually, the agenda of the Evening Sun's articles was to have people believe that they were actually going to be on your agenda. Turns out, they were also just in the audience. They also were going to be allowed here five minutes if time allowed and they were able to. So did get to hear them, have heard it before. It's a continual story and I'm pretty sure you all have heard some of that before and even specifically from at least one of those people that was here. So this time, the reason I'm here tonight was there was another article in last Thursday Evening Sun that led me to believe the same thing, that there was going to be a couple, Matt and Tammy Manning, from Franklin Forest, Pennsylvania, that was going to be here tonight as part of your agenda. It didn't say it was going to be, but it implied that, and again, making people think that. Apparently, I'm a little slow at the game here because I see there's fewer people here this week than there was, or tonight than there was a week ago. And so the reason that I'm here to speak to you to that is the idea of being in Oxford, we've dealt with this for a while too. And as you just asked about the moratorium down there, it did go through a letter of intent that was presented to the board for legal action. And they chose to take a different path and that's why I went to the zoning event instead. And that did pass. So down there, we've been dealing with this for a good while, been active in that whole process. And through the whole thing, it's information that's deceptive, incomplete, embellished to make things sound. It's a scare campaign. We dealt through that down there. And I heard the name Slatchy get brought up. He's an attorney that came the other way back in August. He made a presentation at the library down there, him and Robert Wedley, on both sides of the issue as to versus the moratorium at that point in time, actually. And one of the things that I did notice and actually make point of at that meeting was how courteous Rob Wedley was to everyone when they asked questions and a really cooperative sort of person. And then when David Slatchy got up there to answer questions, made his presentation, I even made a comment of how inconsiderate he was to the people at that meeting at that point in time. And of course, he took offense to that, which so did one of the board members, but kind of decided the point. It's the way I saw it and I wasn't the only one that saw it that way. So if you all do end up dealing with David Slatchy, keep that in mind. We had a lot of information down there on him. It's C E D C, which was built up in the article in the paper. It took about two column inches to explain what he was. Well, he is actually, he and his wife, and they comprise that law firm. So I think it'd be in your best interest to keep that in mind. And if you would like more information out of him, we're down at Oxford. We're more than willing to help you out with that. So good luck. I think you're all on the right path and thank you very much for your time.
He was here once.
He was here once? Okay, so you are familiar with him then? Okay. Hopefully, once is all you get.
Thank you, appreciate it.
He also thought he was running a job.
Yes.
Oh, really? That's a common thing up here, huh?
Yeah.
Some strange reading.
Thank you.
Okay, you got it.
Hi, my name's Tammy Manning. I'm the one from Franklin Township. And I brought a video of my well erupting, if anybody wants to see that. Our methane levels doubled almost from December of 2011 to March of 2011. And they're far above natural levels, even though we are close to Salt Springs. I will read you the last paragraph in my Pennsylvania D E P cover letter. It says, "Even though it is our understanding that your private water well has been taken offline," which the gas company did do, "we have a water buffalo." And we have, our well vented now. The gas company did that for us thanks to the D E P asking them to. It says, "Even though it is our understanding that your private water well has been taken offline, you still should be aware of the following information. Methane is the predominant component of natural gas. Federal Water Standard limitations have not been established for methane gas. The level of concern begins above 28 milligrams per liter of methane, which is referred to as the saturation level. At this level, under normal atmospheric pressure, the water cannot hold additional methane in solutions. This may allow the gas to come out of the water and concentrate in the airspace in your home or building. This is a physical danger of fire or explosion due to mitigation of natural gas into water wells or through soil into dwellings where it could be ignited by sources that are present in most homes and buildings. Natural gas can also cause a threat of asphyxiation, although it is extremely rare. Our methane levels at that time, 58.4 milligrams per liter. Above 28 milligrams per liter is a concern."
Now, this was before your well was vented?
This was, this was a water test they took before our well was vented. The week-
Did they take it after readings, after the well was vented?
After the well was vented, they, no, not, they can't take water samples after the well was vented because it was taken offline. We now have a water buffalo that is town water that the gas company delivers into a cattle tank outside of our home. And they put a new pump on, a jet pump, that's frozen up several times and burst. We've had to have that replaced by the gas company several times, seized up. We have a space heater within the plywood box that they built around it. And we have to pay for the electric that heats that plywood box that holds the water to keep it from freezing. And other things, I mean, we have high levels of other things as well in our water. Barium, aluminum, total dissolved solids, chloride, a lot of things that are above normal levels. There was a video done by one of our neighbors. It was a documentary called Truthland that was promoted by the gas industry. Truthland was to diminish the Gasland videos that Josh Fox did to show people what happens in a natural gas drilling area. Gasland gives you an accurate view of what we see every day. Truthland is our neighbor. Shelley DePue, her wells and another family's wells are under investigation right now for contaminating our well, our water well. Shelley DePue has 10 wells on her farm. Four had casing failures, one had to be plugged completely. And she fails to mention that in the documentary. And they put this video out to scam everyone into believing that there are no problems. We have seen many, many homes that have problems. We have four homes in our immediate neighborhood, they have new vents on their wells, and three of them with water buffalos. A lot of people can't talk. A lot of people are employed by subcontracted companies from the gas company. They will lose their jobs if they talk. Okay, sorry.
My name's Anthony Manning, I'm from Susquehanna County. And my wife and I bought our home in December 2010. And when we bought the home, the well was brand new. A year and a month later, my wife flushes the toilet, the water turned black. Gas companies say everything is so safe, they won't cause any problems. The list of people affected in Pennsylvania now in homes is well over 1,000. And there's problems all over the state. There's water buffalos all over the state. How many water buffalos were in the state of Pennsylvania before the gas drilling came into this area? Absolutely zero, none. Now there's water buffalos all over the place. A year and a month after we bought our home, my well turned, my water turned black. It started to erupting and I've got more gas coming out of my well than I, we had, the D E P came in and tested methane levels come out of our faucets. We had so much methane come out of our faucets, we couldn't use a kitchen stove. We could not use our furnace, nothing. Our stove was too close to the sink. I've got 15 years left to pay on that house, what you do. This is coming your way. If they let it in New York, it's coming your way. It's not going to happen to everybody. There's not problems from every well, but there is problems, just like my wife said. In the Truthland movie, Shelley DePue's well is under investigation for spilling up our water. Sure, we got Salt Springs over there. Salt Springs levels are a third of what our methane levels are in our well to this day. We had 82% coming out of the wellhead, which is, you know, I'm not here to deny anybody the money. It's just, this is coming your way and there is problems. There's problems all over the state. Gas companies tell you how safe everything is? That's not true. And you will find that out if it comes into New York State because there will be problems. Now, I believe that New York State is going to have some tougher regulations. From what I've seen in Pennsylvania, the D E P is basically letting them have free rein. I mean, you've got the Halliburton loophole. Why are, you know, any other industry has got air and water quality restrictions. They've got to go buy it. Gas companies got nothing. They can do, they basically do whatever they want down there. You know, come see it. Come visit us. Come visit the families who are affected. I'm tired of being called a lunatic because my home and my children and my family's health's been affected and there's nothing I can do. I've got a third of an acre. I'm not getting a ton of money from these gas companies. You know, you people, everybody thinks that they're going to get rich when these gas companies come along. Well, unless you've got a lot of land, it ain't happening. Because right now, the prices are very low and people aren't getting hardly anything. There's very little money. You know, it's not, if you have a lot of land, it may benefit you, but most people don't have a lot of land. And when these problems happen, you're stuck. You get shoved under the rug. The state of Pennsylvania, we have not had one official, the government, none of the local officials, nobody's came to our house to see our problems. The D E P's been there, tested, and like she said, you know, from the first test to the second test, nothing, well, they nearly doubled in two months' time. And we didn't have any methane coming into our faucet before this started. Because you turn on the faucet and it was 90% air, the other 10% water coming out. And it was like right on fire. We didn't have that. Everybody says, oh, your water was always bad. Well, how many people live in my house for this? Nobody. My house sat empty since 2006. The well is brand new, brand spanking new well. And, you know, I'm just, I'm tired of being called a lunatic because I have problems. And I don't think that anybody should be afraid to come out and say that they have problems. Nobody should be afraid to say that their family's been affected. Nobody. And this is happening in Pennsylvania and it's coming your way. I mean, I don't know how the New York State government's going to handle it, hopefully, for everybody's sake in this room and for New York State. I'm originally from New York. My family's all from New York. They're packed to flight with this. And, you know, I really hope that New York State, if they do allow it, they watch them like a hawk because you've got to. There's spills, every well pad has had spills nonstop. And if anybody likes to hunt, these spills, they have these brine spills, the deer sit there and eat them. They love the salt, but it's not only salt, it's in that brine. There's also metals, there's radioactivity, everything else in there. I won't eat the deer anymore.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm the Vice President of Central New York Building Services. I'm also a retired engineer. I'm a boss, Rita. My daughter was a horse owner. Give you a fair representation of the town of Montrose, P A. My daughter rode in the stable there, Scottfield Stables, registered Morgan horses. She is a two-time Grand National champion. She is a two-time Reserve World Champion. I resource this here in the Southern Tier, I live in the town of Atherton. My horses are fine. My horses that were in Scottfield, the land is leased. These are registered Morgan horses worth up to $75,000. There isn't one of them having a portion that isn't natural. There isn't one of them that is in this state. I brought up some newspapers from Pennsylvania to give you a fair representation of what is going on or a balanced representation. If you'd be so kind, give you with a language. Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't ask first. Sir? Would you like to have? There is also a new film out, Fractation. Truthland, this Truthland, Fractation. There's something that was done by an investigative reporter from Ireland that has no Bostonish race. This film was funded from private money solicited in small amounts. I would highly recommend that each and every one of you go to see the film and learn the truth about Truthland. As an engineer, I specialize, I have a degree in mechanical engineering. I specialize in heating ventilation, air conditioning, indoor environment, containment spaces, etc., etc. I've worked for the U S Institute for Education for their new system. As far as methane, yes, is a problem though. I accept the original draft, E S G I S. I think the well casings in there speak for themselves as far as saying, I don't see any real problem with the well casings. I don't see any real problem with the well. Let it come out. Make the decision after you have the facts. Don't go on humor, don't go on the UN, go on the facts. If you have the chance, go see Fractation. You will truly enjoy it and will realize what really is going on. Thank you very much, Rita.
Can I speak? Is there any time? Is there any time?
We have bills to review. Again, the next meeting is the 11th. And I guess I would just like to say something even probably, just not for you. I mean, you write the letters to the editor. It does come across that speakers are invited and put on the agenda by the town of Plymouth.
Well, I didn't say that of town of Plymouth. I said by, I mean, I have to watch that carefully.
I don't want to get into debate, but, you know, I know you said, I read it. It does come across that the town is invited and that's simply not the case.
But, you know, I signed it for Plymouth friends of Clean Water. But, you know, I signed it for Plymouth friends of Clean Water.
I understand.
Yeah.
I just want, I want you to know, I'm not speaking to a board to give it to myself. I think it's, I need to stop.
But I could say, these people are generous enough to come up 60 miles and...
I don't want to, my point is...
The Plymouth Town Board is going to limit them to five minutes. Is that better? Because, you know, it's unfortunate. I think you should be allowing these people more time because...
People who are, might, might understand it better than you.
Because they're experts. I mean, they're living the life, they know what's happening down there.
Okay. We've got bills. Here's your guy.
We're still in public session, so conversations and other meetings, take them outside.